We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Regular Meeting for tonight, which is Monday, December the 19th, 2022. We'll have our invocation by Reverend Brian Berryhill of Heritage Baptist Church, and after that, our Pledge Allegiance will be led by Mayor Protim. Please stand for the invocation.
Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, we come to you again tonight, thankful, Lord, for another opportunity to call on your name. Thankful, Lord, for this opportunity to open up in a word of prayer, and what I just pray you'd be with each one, Lord, as they go through this meeting today, that I pray that you'd have your will and way in each one of our lives, and you'd put a safe hedge, a hedge of protection about our community. And, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for this season. Just help us, Lord, to be grateful, and, Lord, for all that you've done for us, and, Lord, to pass that along to others. And we love you in Jesus's name. Amen. United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protim and Pastor Berryhill. We appreciate you coming in. Merry Christmas. We do not have any announcements or presentations. I'll just go over the rules really quickly. That we have, if you're the listed, if there's some items that are not listed on the agenda and you'd like to speak to us, there's, that will be taken under comments from citizens and delegates section of the agenda. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Regular Meeting. This is a meeting where items will be voted on that were dealt with on our last legislative work session, and so it'll go a little bit differently. And protocol is that if you come up to do a presentation, please give us your name and address for the record. Only one person speaking at a time. If you have any electronic devices or cell phones, we ask you to put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting. The agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person or persons will come forward and do their presentation. Myself and council members will vote this evening. If we have any additional questions from things that were not presented last Thursday, we may ask that, those questions. Twenty minutes for those in favor of an item, twenty minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes. Again, give us your name and address for the record. If you have printed material, please give that to our city clerk or assistant city clerk, and will be handled accordingly. They will make copies and disseminate those copies to myself and council members. Now, we'll move on with item number five. As we go down the agenda, there are printed agendas outside on the desk and/or you can follow on the screen above me. Number five is adoption of the regular meeting agenda for November 19th, 2022. Open the floor for a motion to approve.
Sound moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved in second to adopt the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for tonight, which is just Monday, December 19th, 2022. Do we have any questions or comments from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. Move on to item number six. Minutes of the December 1st, 2022 Legislative Work Session and Minutes of the December 5th, 2022 Regular Meeting and Executive Session. Open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes, please.
Sound moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. It's been properly moved in second to approve the minutes of December 1st, 2022 and December 5th meetings. Do we have any comments or questions from council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are unanimously approved. Now, I do, item number seven, and it is for an executive session, so I will open the floor for a motion to recess into executive session to consult and meet with legal counsel regarding administrative proceedings.
Sound moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. I have a motion. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved in second to adjourn to executive session. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? Not hearing any. It's all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are into recess into executive session to consult and meet with legal counsel regarding administrative proceedings.
448, and we will hear from Ms. Hampton.
All right. You all have been briefed by your legal counsel on the agreement for local option sales tax and service delivered with Douglas County. If there are no further questions, what you have attached is ready for action and for approval for the mayor's signature.
Any further questions or comments from Madam Mayor or council? Seeing none, then I would like to make a motion to approve item 22-448.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair or Ms. Acting Chair. I have motion to approve item 22-448. Do we, is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. It's been properly moved in second by Councilman Estes and second by Mayor Protim Miller to approve item 22-448. Do we have any additional or any comments or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-448 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we have tonight.
Okay, so we will take a short recess while I'm signing these documents, and we'll come back. So, we're in recess. Oh, I apologize. Do we have to make a motion or anything to do that, Mr. Dodson?
No.
Okay. We have to take a short recess. All right. We are coming out of recess, and we're back in session. Thank you so much for your patience. We appreciate that. We'll move on, then. We just let, we left off with item number eight. We'll go to item number nine, Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Protim Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Protim. We move on, then, to Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several items tonight under Finance.
Yes, sir.
We'll begin with item A. Authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Secure Record Solutions LLC for the Police Department Historic Report Scanning, RFP 2022-016. We had Captain Ashley Sanders and Mr. Hammy Jewell with us on Thursday. Did a very good job in our discussion concerning that. Looks like Major Davidson may have some additional information for us, sir. Is that correct?
I don't have any additional information. I can answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions or comments that Mayor or any of the council members may have? I know, Mr. Miller, Mr. Mayor Protim, you were not here if you had any questions concerning that.
No, nothing. None at this time.
We have several items that we did not have on the consent agenda on Thursday because of our limited number of individuals here, so we'll be going through these rather quickly. Item 22-427, I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Estes. It's been properly moved in second by Councilman Adams and second by Councilmember Estes to approve item 22-427. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-427 is unanimously approved.
Item B. Authorize the mayor to execute the professional services agreement between the City of Douglasville and Goodwin Mills Kwood LLC for professional services regarding the City of Douglasville's comprehensive plan update. Ms. Reed is with us, and she can answer any additional questions. Ms. Reed, did you have any other information you needed to provide?
No, sir, not at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protim or anyone else? Do we have any questions?
I did have a chance, Mr. Chair, to look this over, and the contract does look good. Thank you.
All righty. Seeing none, then, I make a motion that we approve item B, which is 22-430.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been duly seconds. Who'd you get, Ms. James?
It's not on my screen, Ms. Candace. I'm sorry. No, ma'am.
It's on mine.
I have it now. Thank you. I did.
We had a tie between council-
Point of order. It did not give me the opportunity to move. Thank you.
Okay, so by hand, those via citizen didn't work electronically, we have the Chair, Councilman Adams, to make an approval to approve item 22-430, and second by Councilmember Watts. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-430 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Shala.
Item C. Authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Georgia Power Company to install pedestrian light poles and underground electrical infrastructure for lighting services to accommodate the Douglasville Downtown Amphitheater and Green Space Construction Project. Mr. Marcus Thompson was with us on Thursday. Mr. Thompson, do you have any additional information?
No, sir, not at this moment.
All righty. Questions, comments, or council? All righty. Seeing none, then, I make a motion that we approve item 22-433.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair, Councilman Adams, and second by Councilmember Watts, I mean Councilmember Estes, to approve item 22-433. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-433 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item D. Authorize the mayor to sign Amendment Six to the City's Standard Agreement Between Owner and Architect dated June 7th, 2019 with Tunnel Spangler and Associates Incorporated for Design Services for the City's Town Green Project and to Add Construction Administrative Services for the Douglasville Downtown Amphitheater and Green Space Project. Mr. Thompson, you have anything additional?
Nothing additional at this moment. Thank you.
Does anyone, council or Madam Mayor, have any additional questions or comments?
No, sir.
Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to clarify, are they, is this, are these lump sum quantities, or are they charging by the hour, and that they're drawing as a, as a do not exceed amount?
Could you repeat that?
Are they, are they drawing on this contract as a, as a lump sum, or are they drawing it as a, on a proceeding basis, hourly basis?
It's the first option, and they're drawing it based on a lump sum, but they have listed their hourly rates, so that we could, for justification basis.
Okay. So, they'll be invoicing us on, on a, basically as a percentage as they work their way through the contract?
That's correct.
Construction administration contracts can be tricky in that way. Sometimes you can do them hourly, sometimes you can do them. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, I'm seeing item for change order number eight on my screen, but we're still on item D, trying to get a move on that. I want to make sure I don't make a mistake here.
So, D should be the one?
So, D's the one that we're on that we've not made a motion on, and E's the one showing on my screen.
That's correct. That was my error.
Okay.
I skipped ahead too far, but yes, we're on item D.
So, can we back up for the motion on, on item D?
Spangler Associates.
All right. You should see the motion now for item D.
All righty, that's correct. Thank you. Make a motion, then, that we approve item 22-435.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-435. Do we have any additional comments or questions, and we appreciate the question that was asked by Mayor Protim to Mr. Thompson. I don't see any others. Mayor Protim, you good? Okay. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-435 is approved. Ms. E?
It showed defeated initially, but it was unanimously approved. Is that correct, Madam Mayor?
Yes, it was unanimously approved. Yes, sir.
Move on to the last item, thankfully. Item E. Authorize the mayor to execute change order number eight with Ray Lynn and Associates Incorporated for the Douglasville Downtown Amphitheater Green Space Construction Project for the Putting Green Area Modifications, Mechanical and Electrical Additions, Sidewalk Removal and Replacement at Church Street, and Utility Infrastructure Modifications. Mr. Thompson and Mr. Steve Morrow from CPS were here with us on Thursday. Questions, comments additionally from council or Madam Mayor? Mr. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple of questions on this one. On part of the change orders, like the first one regarding the hand dryers in the restrooms, it said they were required. I went back through the code, and I cannot find anywhere in the building code that requires electric hand dryers, and they're saying they're required. Was it? Maybe you can clarify that for me.
Yeah, so the, the main issue with that potential change order item, it was stated that within a drawings, it was showing one sheet with one hand dryer option for each restroom. However, there was another sheet showing two for the restrooms at the event space facility. So, Ray Lynn went back to our design professional, TSW, to clarify which option were we going with, and they responded with two hand dryers.
I'm having a problem putting the, and there's debate as to whether or not, which is more ecological or environmental, sustainable, is having paper towels versus that. Did we get credit for taking out the paper, paper towel dispensers?
I would assume that we would potentially leave those as an option.
Well, we could. I suppose we could leave them. So, make sure that they stay in, then. I didn't see any credit for them, so make sure those stay in as well. The other side of, the last question is also on the, I guess we're changing out the putt-putt course to rock client, to, to a bunch of boulders.
Yes, sir.
And the credit was listed for the putt-putt course as just the surfacing material, basically, the, basically the groundwork, but I don't see any credit for, if we're having a putt-putt course, there should have been presumed like a storage facility and also like a ticket booth, and I didn't see any credit for either of those items.
That, that, that wasn't the case.
That was never part of the plan?
No, sir. Yeah.
Extra, not only manpower, but equipment as well.
Okay. Well, I was gonna say that if that had been designed in there, we should have been credited with it, but since it was BYOC, bring your own club. Okay. Fair enough, then. Thank, that's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any other question or comment? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We will then make a motion that we approve item 22-444.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-444. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? I don't hear any. All those in favor of approving item 22-442, please say aye.
Aye.
I mean, 444. Please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any nay? Thank you. The ayes have it. Item 22-444 is unanimously approved.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have under Finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it, and thank you, Mr. Thompson. We'll move on, then, to the next committee, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee. The vice chair is, is you as well, Councilman Adams.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Housing and Community Affairs has one item. Reappoint Ms. Antoinette Wright to the Douglas County Community Services Board to fill the term expiring December 31st, 2028. Ms. Jackson, do you have information for us?
Good afternoon. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. I have no other information to add from Thursday's meeting.
We did verify that Ms. Wright was desirous of being reappointed, okay?
Yes, sir.
And there was no other?
This will be her first full term, and she does want to be reappointed.
Okay. Questions, comments? Seeing none, then, I make a motion that we approve item 22-442.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-442. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-442 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have tonight under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. We appreciate citizens being willing to serve on our boards and authorities. We'll move on, then, to item number 12, which is Personnel Organization Committee, and that is chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight.
Yes, sir.
Authorize the mayor to execute the Fourth Amendment to the Medical Services Agreement between the City of Douglasville and CareHere Management, PLLC, and Ms. Austin Bing will handle this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. T. Austin Bing, 6695 Church Street, Human Resources. This item discussed on Thursday relates to our Wellness Center Agreement with Premise Health Formally Care Here. As mentioned, this is a housekeeping item. As the full migration continues to merge the two companies together, and this is regarding professional liability insurance. Premise Health uses a captive insurance group, and it's also backed by a commercial policy as well. So, this amendment is to merely ensure that the healthcare providers are covered under the new merger, and that this amendment is well documented. So, it is just housekeeping, as they continue to fully migrate to Premise Health.
And again, we carried this over because of our lack of quorum, so are there any questions for Ms. Austin, for her, Ms. Austin Bing? No? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing. I'd like to make a, I would like to move to approve item 22-431.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair, Councilman Watson, second by Councilmember Adams. To approve item 22-431, do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? Thank you. I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-431 is unanimously approved. Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. We'll bring it back down to Planning and Development Committee. Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Planning and Development has several items tonight. We'll start item A. Motion, I make a motion to remove from the table item 22-408.
Thank you so much. I have a motion to remove from the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. You have it, Ms. James? Thank you. It's been properly moved in second to remove from the table item 22-417. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? It's been properly moved. All those in favor of removing this item from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-417 is unanimously approved to remove the item from the table.
Okay. Tabled from November 21st, 2022. Consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of combining four 9.77 acres on Chicago Avenue and Van Zant Mill Road in Land Lot 224, District 2, Section 5, Parcels 28 and 34. Application by the Benoit Group LLC care of Raven Thompson. Ms. Reed, you had brought this to us on Thursday night. Could you give us an update or any new information?
No, sir, nothing new at this time.
And I understand that the owners and the applicant have requested that this, again, be tabled until the meeting-
January 5th, and I believe the 9th is incorrect.
January 5th, January 9th, 2023. That was at their request. Do we have any questions or comments of council or Madam Mayor?
No, sir.
Seeing none, then, I make a motion that we approve item 22-40, I'm sorry, we make a motion to table item 22-408 to the January meetings, January 5th, January 9th, 2023.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I have a motion to approve, I mean, to table item 22-408 to the meetings of January 5th and January 9th, 2023. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to table items 22-408 to the aforementioned dates. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? All those in favor of tabling this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-408 is tabled unanimously approved to table to the meetings of January 5th and 9th, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We then make a motion to remove from the table item 22-382.
Have a motion to remove from the table. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second to remove from the table item 22-382. Do we have any comments or questions as it relates to this item? Okay. Not hearing any. All those in favor of removing from the table item 22-418, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. It's removed from the table.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tabled from November 21st, 2022. Consider a request for development plan approval for the Astoria at Crystal Lake Senior Living Development on 9.77 acres on Chicago Avenue and Land Lots 193 and 224, District 2, Section 5, Parcel IDs 022402, 50034, and 022402, 50028. Plans dated September 7th, 2022. Application by the Benoit Group. Mr. Marcus Thompson here. He presented this to us on Thursday night. Mr. Thompson?
So, the development plan item that's present before you this evening runs parallel to item B. So, with that being said, the applicant has asked to table this item for the January 5th and 9th round of council meeting as well.
Okay. Questions, comments, or council? Anyone? Makes sense, Mr. Thompson. Thank you. If there are no other comments at the request of the applicant, then I will make a motion that we table this item, item 22-382, to the meetings of January 5th and January 9th, 2023.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to table this item. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved in second to table items 22-382 to the meetings of January 5th and 9th. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving to table item 22-382 to the meetings of January 5th and 9th, 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. This motion, this item is moved to table to the meetings of January 5th and 9th, item 22-382.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to item E. Consider a request for change in zoning from R2 Single Family Residential Detached and OD Office Distribution District to GC General Commercial District for 5.4, 5.14 acres located on Dury Lee Lane and Land Lots 52, 831, Districts 1 and 18, Sections 5 and 2, Parcels 5, 7, 10, 39, and 40. Parcel ID numbers 005201, 50005, 005201, 50007, 08311820010, 08311820039, and 08311820040. Application by the City of Douglasville. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. So, there's five parcels. As mentioned on Thursday, they have a zoning that doesn't allow for the businesses that they currently have. Staff has done an inspection of those particular five parcels. With that, we communicated with the property owner and business owners and informed them that the city is initiating a rezoning that allows for their business to continue as served. With that, staff is recommending rezoning from the parcel of R2 OD to GC for these five parcels.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, and I think that we all understand, having met prior concerning these, that this was something that was necessary in order to accommodate those businesses that have been there for many, many years. Questions or comments, or council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Wasn't there a provision if they were to be sold or someone else, was that something in there?
Yes, ma'am, you are correct. I apologize. There is a condition where staff is asking for the one parcel that has a industrial use, which is a towing company. We are asking for them to be allowed to continue under the GC. However, should they close that business, they will, we're asking to not have that use continue, for it to go under the allowed uses of GC.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is that placed into the deed? Is that how the future property owner will understand that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of the question.
That will be placed into the deed?
So, that will be placed as a condition of this rezoning. So, should someone come in after the business has closed, staff will look into the staff report and find the condition that states that they could not move forward. So, it would be something placed within the conditions.
How that knowledge gets passed forward, that's all. Okay.
I'm sorry. It sounded like you're mumbling. I'm sorry. I couldn't hear. I'm sorry.
I said that's how that, how that knowledge gets passed forward.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Because we've lost information over the years and few things. So, make sure. Thank you.
Others? Okay. Seeing that that's all? Okay. Okay. Then we will move forward then and make a motion that we approve item 22-425.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-425. We did have some discussion. Is there any additional comments or concerns as relates to this item? I don't see any from the council. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-425 is unanimously approved.
We'll move on then to item F.
Yes, sir.
Consider a request for change in zoning from R2 Single Family Residential Detached District to NC Neighborhood Commercial District for 1.56 acres located on Dury Lee Lane, Land Lot 831, District 18, Section 2, Parcels 6 and 7. Parcel ID number 08311820006 and 08311820007. Application by the City of Douglasville. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. Very similar to the last item. There's two parcels that are located along Dury Lee. They intersect at Big B Road. These two parcels have one business, is a daycare at that location. They have a R2 zoning as well, and staff is asking to have a neighborhood commercial zoning. This would then allow for the same provisions that we were asking for the previous item. Whereas if they were to go into a new ownership, staff is asking for there to be a condition that states that they must go back before council for special lane use provision, as you are aware that the special lane use clause does require to go back before council. Thank you.
Okay. Questions, comments? Anyone? All righty. Thank you, Ms. Reed. We'll make a motion then, item 22-426, that we approve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Protim. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-426. Do we have any additional comments as relates to this item?
Madam Mayor, just so that everyone is clear, and so that the applicants and the business owners that are there are clear, I'd like to make sure that staff does provide them with a letter when we have these zonings that are conditional on these two items, so that both of the property owners have notice should they decide to sell, that they could then, of course, give the, any future owner some insight, so that that new owner does not come forward anticipating one thing, and then we basically are not allowed to help them. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. So every action held by council on zoning, they receive a letter? We can, in fact, if you're asking for the business to receive the letter, is that what I'm hearing? Or you're asking for, okay.
I would like to see the owner specifically.
Oh, the owner, yes, sir.
Since there are tenant owners' relationships here that are ongoing, correct?
Yes, sir. So the owners will always receive the action relative, but the businesses typically don't. We just send it over to the property owner.
Well, I guess my question then would be, if I'm leasing this property and I, and I sell the business, I don't own the real estate, then I'm assuming that the new owner would assume that they are going to be able to lease that same space from the owner. And if that, that business operator does not know that, then you may have some confusion.
We can communicate to both. No worries. Thank you, sir.
That's all.
I think that's wise. That's a great idea, because if you have a towing company, another person thinks they're coming to do towing, and then they may not know, as Mayor Protim brought up prior too, they'll go and then they'll say zoning, oh, you can't do this. And they'll say, well, the other business was that way, but it's in the zoning. So people don't really dig down that deep when they, you know, usually buy.
Just a real quick question. So the owner would be required, if he was selling it, to sell it as its zone now, not-
Subject to that.
Right. So whoever he was selling it to, he would have to communicate to that person? That would be part of? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Seeing none? Then I'll make a motion that we approve item 22-426.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve item 22-426. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
It's 429.
Okay. I'm sorry. Got confused by having discussion on the item. I'm sorry. I'll retract that second motion then. We have one.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It's unanimously approved.
Thank you, Ms. Candace. Last item, I promise.
I know, it's a lot.
Consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of dedicating and abandoning sections of Gurley and Wood Road right of way on 49.11 acres at 8600 Wood Road, Land Lot 162, District 2, Section 5, Parcel 1, application by SL Douglas Place, 2 LLC. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. So this item is an item that came before you previously. However, it needed to have the right of way dedicated over to the city and noted within your plat. That has since been changed. And so we're basically having housekeeping where we're correcting the language within the plat, and from there, staff is recommending approval of the plat acceptance.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. So basically, it's a housekeeping item.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Questions, comments? Seeing none, then I make a motion that we approve item 22-429.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve item 22-429. Do we have a, do I have a second, please? Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-429. Do we have any additional comments or questions or any concerns as it relates to this item? From council members, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving item 22-429, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-429 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for all of your hard work on those items. Planning and Development Committee has no other business tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate it. It's good you don't have to calculate with all those different numbers and stuff. We'll move on to item 14, Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. I'll ask Mayor Protim if you don't mind taking that committee, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business at this time with the Public Improvement and Beautification Committee.
Thank you, sir. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The PR Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee, the Vice Chair, I'll ask, please. Councilman Watts, if you don't mind taking this committee, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have several items tonight. Item A, consider the application for the alcoholic beverage license for retail package sale of wine and malt beverages at the following establishment. Proposed licensee, 12291 Veterans Memorial, Inc., DBA, Douglas Food Mart, Location 12291 Veterans Memorial Highway. Proposed agent outlet manager, Char Nisa. The required fees have been paid into the Finance Department, and we did have a public hearing on this item on Thursday. So the applicant, do you have, if you're here, is she here? Does she have anything to add? I don't, I don't see the applicant. Do we have anything else on this particular item? City manager, or we ready to go ahead? There's no comments from?
There are no comments. You've already had your public hearing on Thursday night, so if you're prepared to vote, you're welcome to go ahead and vote.
Madam Mayor, did, did you ask Police Department already?
I did.
So we've got that covered. Okay.
So there weren't any issues?
If there are no comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 22-403.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-409. Do we have any additional comments or questions as relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-403 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item B, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Siemens Industry, Inc. to update the fire alarm system at the Douglasville Public Safety Complex. Captain Sanders covered this last week. Do we have anything to add?
No, sir. No additional information.
No, no additional information. Any questions? Mayor Protim, I know you weren't, you were here. Are you good with this?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. All right. If there are no comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 22-412.
Thank you so much. Councilman Watts, I have a motion to approve this item. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second by Councilmember Watts and second by Councilmember Adams to approve item 22-412. Do we have any additional comments or questions? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-412 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item C, authorize the mayor to sign the asset disposition services agreement with propertyroom.com, Inc. for the sale of forfeited surplus and/or damaged personal property by the Douglasville Police Department. And on Thursday, Captain Sanders covered this quite well. Anything to add, Major?
No, sir.
Any comments from, yes, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. Major, we were told that this is going to be, everything is moving to the virtual world, so it's going to be electronic. We will not have the auctioneer. Would this preclude us from having the auctioneer come any time?
It won't preclude the city from having an auctioneer.
But the police department?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, so what'll happen to the city items that we used to have auctioned at the police department?
This will just add another option for us auctioning, so it actually would not necessarily preclude, but just the way that it was mentioned on Thursday night, this gives us an option for not having to store tons of items.
Yes.
So we will be able to auction things off.
Like eBay or something?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair.
Any other questions? If there are no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 22-412, 14, I'm sorry, 14, 22-414.
Yes, sir. I have a motion to approve item 22-414. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-414. I ask a question. If there are any other comments or questions at this time, please speak up. I don't see anyone, so all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-414 is unanimously approved.
Our last item, under Public Safety, adopt a resolution to establish rules and regulations for the City of Douglasville Municipal Court's Environmental Court Division regarding property maintenance code violation matters. Ms. Hampton?
This resolution, if adopted, allows for the Associate Judge for the City of Douglasville to hear property maintenance matters as part of municipal court.
Thank you. And we have had discussion about this. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Hampton? Okay. Like to make a motion to approve this item, 22-447.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. I have a motion to approve this item. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. I had a dueling second, but I think Councilman Estes, did he get it? Ms. James?
Yes, ma'am. We have Councilman Estes at the second.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-447. Do we have any additional comments or questions as relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-447 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we had tonight under Public Safety.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Having an opportunity to clear your throat, so that you can have, take item number 17, which is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee, that's chaired by Councilman Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have several items tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism. Item A, adopt a resolution to authorize the City of Douglasville West Pines Golf Club staff to receive compensation for providing golf lessons at West Pines Golf Course, Golf Club. We've discussed this on Thursday night. I know Mayor Protim wasn't here. Mr. Bass will answer any questions anybody has. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Bass?
No, sir. Nothing else to add.
Any questions?
I know. We had discussed this several months ago.
Yes.
So I think we covered it pretty well back then.
Okay.
I'm fine. Thanks.
All right. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 22-405.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair and second by Councilmember Adams to approve item 22-405. Do we have any additional comments or questions as relates to this for committee person or Mr. Bass? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-405 is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Item B, adopt a resolution to allow nonprofit organizations to utilize city parks, facilities, with no monetary fee and consideration for providing services and programming to the Douglasville community. We also discussed this on Thursday night. Mr. Bass provided some good information about that. Mayor Protim, do you have any questions about this item?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we, do we have a standard contract for outside organizations to utilize the parks for such activities?
So what we currently do is if an outside organization want to use our facilities, we'll do a standard rental agreement, but if they do provide that service, then we don't charge them for that, sorry, for to utilize the space. So this will actually put it in documented format that we'll exchange services for what what they provide this community.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Could you give, um, I was gonna ask Mr. Bass if he could give those examples again. Just one-
Yes, ma'am.
-that for Mayor Protem that you, I think you talked about Easter or one of those.
Yes, ma'am. So we, uh, there's an annual breakfast with the Easter Bunny that's hosted by, uh, a local nonprofit organization. There's also a backpack giveaway that's hosted by, um, organization at Jesse Davis Park. Um, there's also several mentoring, um, programs that take place at Jesse Davis and at Hunter Park. So these will be the, uh, five oh one C three organizations that we would allow to utilize space in the parks for exchange for their services.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Um, any other questions on this item? No other questions, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve item twenty-two dash four thirty-two.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman, uh, Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-two dash four thirty-two. Um, do we have any additional comments or concerns or any questions as relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-two dash four thirty-two is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item C, uh, the next three items are all appointments.
Uh-huh.
Um, we've got to keep them separate, or can I call them all out and then vote on them at the same time?
Point me over.
They wouldn't eat separate votes.
Okay. All right. I figured. I just thought I'd ask. Is, is that what you were gonna bring up, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, 'cause I had a question regarding one of the appointments.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Um, item C, reappoint Michael Carey to the Retail Two post of the Douglasville Convention and Visitor, Visitors Bureau Board for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Jackson, do you have anything further to add to this item?
Um, I do not. Chelsea Jackson, six six nine five Church Street. Um, just to reiterate that Mr. Michael Carey, he currently, um, serves as the manager, I believe, at the Arborplace Mall. This will be his second term for the CVB Advisory Board. He wishes to be reappointed, and no one else, um, would like to be in the role or on that post for the Retail Two space. And of course, this post is only for an individual that serves in retail, uh, capacity.
Thank you.
As their employer.
Any questions? Yes, Mayor Pro- Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That, that, you answered the first part of my question, which is whether he was actually interested. Um, the second part was, how did you get hold of him? Because the mayor and I have, both had issues of, you know, trying to, uh, get his attention, because we, we, there were certain discussions. We'd like to begin with him regarding, you know, the future of the mall and some issues around the mall. And so my concern was that, you know, his lack of, of, uh, uh, engagement with the city right now. And so I, um, that's a concern I have about that. I don't know that it, this qualifies him from this post, but just, uh, I think it'd be important that if he does want to continue on, that we be able to get a hold of him and, and, and begin those discussions.
Yes. He's been present at all of the CVB meetings. They do meet quarterly. Um, but if you all have any concerns over lack of meeting, I can follow up with him and I can, um, make sure that you all have a meeting with him.
Yeah, that would, that would be good if you can arrange that. Thank you.
And we did meet with him last, the police department, um, myself, the people from Regal Theaters, when we had the concern at the mall with the, um, the altercation. We had opportunity to talk with him. He was very amenable then.
Okay. Uh, any other comments or questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, this item, item twenty-two dash four thirty-six.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-two dash four thirty-six. Do we have any additional comments from, uh, council members as it relates to this item? I don't hear any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-two dash four thirty-six is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, next item, appoint, uh, Sidney Sil- Silvera-
Mm-hmm.
-to the Restaurant Post of the Douglasville Convention and Visitors Bureau Board for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Jackson, do you have anything to add to this item?
Uh, no, sir. I'll just reiterate that Ms. Sidney Silvera, she's currently the catering manager for Proof of the Put-in here at the Douglasville Conference Center. Um, Restaurant One Post is always reserved for the individual serving the capacity here as the catering manager. So she was hired about two or three months ago, um, and she wishes to be appointed in this role.
Thank you. Uh, any comments from Ms. Jackson? Questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve this item, uh, twenty-two dash four thirty-seven.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I had a tie. Ms. Jack, James, did you get?
Yes, ma'am. I have Councilman Adams at the second.
Thank you so much. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-two dash four thirty-seven. Do we have any comments or questions or any concerns as it relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-two dash four thirty-seven is approved, is unanimously approved.
All right. Our last item tonight is to point Riley, uh, Gavorio to the City Post of the Douglasville Convention and Visitors Bureau Board for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And I apologize if I mispronounced that last name. Ms. Jackson, do you have anything to add to this item?
I'll just reiterate that Ms. Riley Gavorio, she currently serves as the Tourism Program Manager for the city of Douglasville. This city post is always reserved for the individual who was currently, um, this was, was currently held by Ms. Samantha Rosado, but of course, Ms. Rosado was promoted, and then we did hire Ms. Gavorio about six months ago. So she has become, um, abreast with CVB, and she's ready to take on that post for the next two years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Jackson? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Oh, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I would just add that, um, she is a delight. Uh, she went to, um, Nashville with us, and she was very engaged in, in the whole process with the Chambers, um, event to do a link trip there. So I think that, um, in her short time, she's jumped in and really rolled up her sleeves and, and just getting acclimated to Douglasville. It's really exciting to see young, um, bright faces and their energy. So, um, Ms. Riley's really, like I said, she's a delight. And she was also here for stranger things, just giving of her time. So we appreciate that so much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item, twenty-two dash four thirty-eight.
Thank you so much. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-two dash four thirty-eight. Um, do we have any additional comments or questions? Thank you. Not hearing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty-two dash four thirty-eight is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, th- those are all the items we had tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on then to item eighteen, which is Technology Committee. That is chaired by Mayor Protem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Technology Committee.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, Transportation Committee, the vice chair is Councilmember, um, Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Transportation.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other business to come before committees tonight? I mean, uh, council. It's running together. Thank you. I know it. I don't see any, um, other business. And we'll move on then to updates from city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
Good evening. No business tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Our police department, Major Davison.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. Just, uh, a couple dates, just to remind you all that, um, in observance of Christmas, City Hall will be closed, um, at noon on the twenty-second and for a full day on the twenty-third as well as the twenty-sixth. Um, also, um, hope you all get your rest, 'cause January's gonna be a very busy month. Um, your first meetings of the year, if you remember, uh, we've moved those dates per the charter to allow for, um, uh, non-confusion with, uh, New Year's date. So your dates for January are January fifth, January ninth, January twelfth, January seventeenth. You also have your strategic planning retreat on the twenty-sixth and the twenty-second, twenty-seventh, and you also have Cities United. So it'll be a very busy January. Um, we will, of course, send that information out, so get your rest, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, if I don't see you between now and the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Thank you all to our staff and our citizens and, um, everything that you do to help the city to move smoothly. And I will tell you now, Mr. Mayor Protem, to put you on notice, that I am going to the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Washington, DC, the week of January seventeenth. The meetings start on the fifteenth. So I'll be there and leave right from DC to come to Cities United on the nineteenth, so, so.
City will be in good hands.
Okay, I know they will be.
Do we, a quick question. Do we have the rest of the, of next year's schedule published yet?
We do. Um, I can have Ms. Candace email that out to you for, um, next year. So we do have that, and I, and we can also include, um, not only Cities United, but Annual Convention in June, 'cause those dates are out as well, so you can mark your calendar.
Great. Thank you.
And you're welcome. And, oh, congratulations on settling loss and, uh, service delivery.
I know. I'm getting texts from the camp, the, the Board of Commissioners saying, "Thank you." Um, I did want to just announce or say to the council, if you all would talk to me over the break about committee assignments, um, otherwise, we will keep moving as we've been doing in the same, uh, vein. And I think you have your Mayor Protem as well to consider. So you all, and talks amongst yourselves and have your representative for Mayor Protem